All right, good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, January 5th Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Uh, can... I have a roll call for attendance, please.
You is aye.
Bonin here.
Cortez, present.
Morris, present. And I don't see Hal up there.
No, I don't either.
Does that say "I'm there"?
It says you're inactive.
You have signed into this account on a previous occasion, so it captured your information.
Okay.
All right, so I do have a couple of announcements this evening. Uh, the first one is that Officer Michael Brenn has been promoted to the rank of Sergeant for the Douglas Police Department. Uh, so congratulations to Sergeant Brenn on the recent promotion. Uh, I know I've interacted with him a few times. Great guy and well-deserved promotion. Anybody have any thoughts or comments on Sergeant Brenn?
I would echo your thoughts. He's a great guy and a great credit. Credit to the department. I'm happy he's gonna be in a leadership position.
Well, if we're doing that, I will just give kudos to the chief for, um, continuing to promote quality personnel into his own department and really creating a great team there.
I concur. Send my congratulations for the promotion.
Okay. Uh, the other announcement is, uh, 2020 Volunteer Milestones. Um, Suzanne has been kind enough to attach a list of the 2020 volunteer and their milestones. Uh, each volunteer has received a certificate thanking them for their service along with a cover letter, uh, offering sympathies that we couldn't do their potluck dinner that they do every year, um, but thanking them for all that they do. And there is a certificate appreciation for Pam Holmes, who has spent 25 years on the Finance Committee, three years on the Board of Selectmen, and 11 years on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, it's quite a bit of service. But to kinda go down through quickly, at 35 years, we have Ellie Chesborough on the Library Board of Trustees Life Members. Uh, she's been on since 1985. 25 years for the Council on Aging for Martha Adams, uh, who joined in 1995. 20 years on the Personnel Board, we have Betty Ann McCollum, uh, and the Board of Registriars for Christine Ferno, both started on, in, uh, 2000. The 15-year mark for Historical Commission, Sean Aldrich. Uh, Open Space Committee, Wilfred Fontaine. And Water and Sewer Commission, Colin Hare, uh, have all been on since '05. In 10 years, we have Building Facility, Building and Facility Construction Committee with Linda Brown. Michael Hutnak on Finance Committee. Tracy Sharkey on Planning Board. Michael Zwicker on Planning Board. And Michael Greco on Planning Board. Tim Bonin, Board of Selectmen. And Keith Blanier's Water Sewer Commission. At five years, we have Brad Maltz on the Economic Development Commission. Uh, Howard D'Amico, five years on Finance Committee. Robert Brezo, uh, on the Board of Health. Mark Blatchford on the Housing Authority. Kate Anderson, Library Trustees Life Member. Tim Bonin, Recreation Commission. Uh, Lee Blanier's on the Board of Registriars. Dave Cortez, uh, five years on the Board of Selectmen. Francis Jolde, uh, for the Tax Workoff Program, as well as Pamela Schwartz, Ron Dumont, Jeanette Mayette, and Louis Garrison. Carl Bradshaw, five years as the Veterans Agent. And Louis Tosino, five years on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, thank you to all of our volunteers, uh, for their time and tenure and the work that they put in in keeping the town going and running smoothly. On a separate note, I would like to make a comment on Vice Chairman Cortez's lapel pin. That is very sharp.
Thank you.
Air Force, I'll bet. It's all good-looking stuff. All right, does anybody have anything else? No announcements or anything? Hope everybody had a good holiday and New Year, and we can get directly into Agenda Item Number One, which is review and sign the HCA for Flying Goose slash Darkstream, uh, for cultivation on Davis Street, manufacturing on Davis Street, and retail on Webster Street and possible votes. So, I think we brought this up in the last meeting. We do have an HCA in front of us. Uh, it has been gone over by council, as well as by the Negotiations Committee on the Selectmen's side, as well as the applicants. Everything looks good as it should be. It looks like it'll be a decent, uh, opportunity for ourselves in the town to move forward into this HCA.
Make a motion that we sign the HCA with Flying Goose and Darkstream?
There's actually three of them, right?
Yes.
All right, specifically to cultivate on Davis Street, to manufacture on Davis Street, and the retail location, the, uh, ever-important space on Webster Street?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You is aye.
Bonin aye.
Cortez aye.
Morris aye. All right. So, we can take care of that afterwards. Uh, Agenda Item Number Two. Uh, we have an appointment to the ZBA alternate, Ronald Forgeit, to promote him to a full member and possible votes.
Well, having read Dan's, uh, note to Suzanne, she forwarded to us, I would make a motion that we appoint Ronald Forgeit to a full member of the ZBA.
Term to 2024.
Oh, I see that, and I was looking for that. And that term would end in 2024.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You is aye.
Bonin aye.
Cortez aye.
Morris aye. All right. Uh, brings us to the next agenda item, which is the FY 2021 Telstone &amp; Son Inc. MOA and possible votes. And then in our packet, we have the amended Telstone MOA approved by the School Committee at their last meeting on December 16th. And they're just looking to know when we move forward. And Mr. Administrator, you've gone over the MOA?
Yes, so the edits that we suggested appear in underlined text. So, all parties have agreed. So, it's good to go, as far as I'm concerned.
But being said, I'll make a motion to approve the MOA with Telstone.
I will second that motion.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
You is aye.
Bonin aye.
Cortez aye.
Morris aye. It's Hal?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, try to town of Douglas. Shouldn't have to be that. I think it's... I think it's 1, 2, 3, 4.
It is 1, 2, 3, 4.
Oh, it's not the new one, it's the old one that resurrected. Didn't work. Well, we'll just, uh, I'll, I'll invite you, and you just watch your email and then click the link that I send you. No, it's not new, it's the old one that needs to go away. I'm desperately trying to get rid of it. All right, let me just, I'll get you on, Hal. They already approved his HCAs, so, if that's what he's asking.
Your HCA was approved. Yeah. Makes your easy. All right. Okay. All right, yeah. All right, you're gonna send me, uh, an email link, and I'll try to come in that way, okay?
What's Hal's email? I can send him a link?
I already did it.
Oh, okay. Are we on the wrong link? Is there...
Yeah, so your stuff has been removed, because the town has its own account.
Ah.
So, when you hit the 404, it would've been better to get me that.
I apologize.
Ah.
Well, he should be here momentarily.
I will correct your 404 error that was occurring after this meeting?
I'm thinking that, um... He remembers me on the, the other device, not that one.
Okay.
Look, when I'm signed into Google, one of my tabs is my Avaya Cloud account. It's straight there, and I just invite people.
All right. So, what I can, I'll just, I can go into the settings on that and remove my account, and just have it by default, it'll remember you and, and just automatically log in. I'll fix that after this meeting.
Yeah, you might need my password, that's all.
All right, so we're done with the Telstone part of it. Do we wanna wait for Hal to hop in before we move forward?
That's, yeah, that's for you guys, yeah.
Yeah, we can wait.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Okay, yeah.
Oh, wait.
Wait.
Yeah, he's in.
There's Hal.
Hal was around.
He's just gonna turn on us.
That's the note.
There it is. Hal in the motorboat.
The helicopter, he's in a Cobra gunship.
You can't teach an old dog new tricks so quickly.
Oh, all right, Hal. We're glad to have you on.
Thank you.
Um, we're on item number four on the agenda, which is to approve new Class II license application for G&amp;L LLC and possible votes. Uh, and this is for a wholesaler's license. Um, I guess there will be no vehicles kept, sold, or stored at the 71 Cedar Street address. So, its sole purpose is to allow for online sales and to allow the applicant to buy and sell motor vehicles to auto dealers through their dealer auction.
I'll make a motion that we approve the new Class II license application for G&amp;L.
And I will second that motion.
I was gonna say, also with the conditions that were presented by Suzanne and Lepak.
I'm still gonna second.
Okay.
Thank you.
The motion was made and firmly seconded by the Vice Chairman. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You is aye.
Bonin aye.
Cortez aye.
Dave is aye.
Morris aye. All right, so, on our next order is to ratify Economic Development Coordinator job description and possible votes. And Matt has included an outline in our packet. Do you want me to go paragraph by paragraph on it, or...
Well, it's only two pages, I don't know if that's necessary, but...
I think there was also a suggestion that, uh, the name might change. Uh, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, that probably is the position.
If we can just add the word "project" in front of the word "coordinator" throughout the document, just so we don't create an acronym that already exists.
Yeah, that's good thinking.
Well, that's, that's somebody else's thinking. At the end of the day, I don't care, it's a, it's a rose by any other name, it's still a rose. Uh, this is the position that was created, or allowed by town meeting to be created. And what we anticipate this person doing is coordinating, facilitating the brand of the town, uh, in its interactions with commercial and industrial projects. Processes can get complex. There are deadlines for applications, for advertising, public hearings, for all the things that people have to negotiate when they try to get their project started. While the town has done tech review for a long time, it hasn't done it the way I envisioned it should be, which is completely, um, welcoming meeting where people are, who have regulatory authority, are able to review conceptual plans and flag issues to assist the applicant in doing the research necessary, to do a final application that shouldn't require a great deal of edits unless there's comment by a board. But anticipating problems and helping people, helping manage people's expectations can go a long way towards improving the town's reputation as a place to do business. And that is the goal here, obviously our goal, is to try to get people through the process quickly, so they can get their project started and join, uh, the economy and the revenue base of the town as quickly as possible. So, um, we worked on this for a couple of weeks, and it's been vetted a couple of times. I think it kinda captures pretty much virtually everything that we had hoped. I'm open to suggestions, but, uh...
Matt, do you envision this being a part-time gig for some time?
This is funded at the part-time level, and I, and that's what I would think. I... This employer will report to me, and my expectation is that, um, we'll keep it efficient. I would expect that the workload will come and go, that there's gonna be a time when there may be three or four significant proposals all being done at the same time. And, um, I wanna get it established and, and get somebody into it, and we can kind of work our way through, uh, what is required. What would change the cir, that, these circumstances? Well, if it starts to become an unbearable, you know, an awful lot of work, then we'll have to come back. The first place we come back is, is this board. I know for a fact that there's going to be something to report from now on, every two weeks, based on where we are with various proposals and people building things in town, or rehabilitating existing buildings. There's gonna be plenty to hear about and talk about, and I'm sure we can cross that bridge when we get to it.
The only other piece that I had was just the education and experience paragraph. It, it seems to be honing in very specifically to, um, to a select group of people in town. And I just, any thoughts on that, as to why we honed in so closely to...
It would be a narrow group of people. As you know, I've been an Economic Development Director, full-time, for four years, for a small city, and I found the two things that were most valuable and, for me, one was private sector experience. If you've never sat in a capital committee meeting in the private sector to talk about whether or not the return on investment was sufficient to justify the investment, what their timeframes are, understanding the pressures that private investors are under with their bosses and their, and their financiers, it's very difficult to help them navigate our process from a position of empathy, which is what I'm looking for. And there's a sensitivity as well to project bottom line. So, if there's gonna be quote-unquote "bad news" from the town side, like, "Oh, you decided to do that," well, that's gonna trigger a bunch of reviews. Understanding what that means to the person you're talking to, it may be many thousands of dollars, it may be inside or outside of their budget, but if you don't have private sector experience managing a project budget, you probably won't really grasp the import of what is, the messaging and having, and couching that message in a way that's appropriate, rather than, "No, you can't do that," or "That's gonna be a problem," or, all that, that negativity that comes up from the informal conversations, it needs to be avoided. As far as experience dealing with our boards, again, what we're trying to do is help somebody navigate the labyrinth. If you've never been part of the labyrinth, it's kinda hard to understand all the moving parts. How zoning is divided from building, but it's the same person who enforces the two codes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The thought would be that having some kind of relationship with people who serve the town would also help understand, you know, quote-unquote "get a read on where people are going with their analysis of different things," so you can help the applicant navigate the process. I always thought it was important, there were... I always knew there was one particular member of a board in one socket who absolutely wanted to call everything spot zoning. So, if I was gonna do something specific in economic development that required a zoning change, I knew I had to have my arguments lined up as to why that wasn't spot zoning, and why it was okay to amend the zoning map the way I was suggesting. It got us past all of those issues in one meeting, rather than have the issue come up de novo at a hearing, and then the, the applicant is asked, the applicant scratches their head, they don't know why. But if I hadn't any law school background or understanding of zoning, I wouldn't be able to make those points. So, I wanted a balance of the two things. That does rule people out, but it rules in the right people.
Makes sense to me.
And this is your hire, right? We don't have any role in that, this is... What is the hiring process?
It's not a department head, so you don't have the opportunity to vote.
Yeah.
We all know how this works. I mean, if the product being delivered isn't to your satisfaction, then we'll make a change.
Regardless, to me, I think it's just a matter of having that position there that's gonna try and help get rid of the stigma of Douglas is difficult to do business with. So, if we have somebody that's dedicated to holding their hand through the process, I think that just makes us look more user-friendly at the end.
Yeah, no, I've always thought that, um, people dealing with the town needed an advocate. Uh, this isn't quite that, but it's in the ballpark.
It's pretty close.
Well, I mean, it's always is, uh, it's a new position, so, I mean, there's always things that we can change and tweak and evolve at later times, if we have to expand upon or eliminate certain parts of it. You know, I mean, that's, let's see how it rolls out first.
Oh, yeah, this is gonna be busy from, you said, two weeks from now, so, um, no, I'm fine with it. I think it's a good opportunity for the town to, uh, kinda bolster that, uh, important need. So, I would vote to, or make a motion to ratify the Economic Development Coordinator position.
I'll second that. I just got another question. What's the timeframe for actually getting somebody on board?
So, I think under the Personnel Bylaw, I have to post this for a minimum of 10 days, which I will do, and I will advertise as well. And, uh, probably the BVT. I don't know, I'd need to go as far afield as Western. And we'll put it on the town website. So, I guess if we're limiting the pool, the one thing is, to serve on a Board or Commission in the town of Douglas, you must be a resident of the town of Douglas. So, we won't be hiring anyone who's outside of the town. Be a resident.
That's my only, I, I understand the, the need to know the personalities and the machinations at Town Hall, but, you know, town government, there's 351 of them in, in the Commonwealth, and they're pretty similar, but we like the colloquial feel of it, I'm, I'll tie with it.
All right, so we have a motion made, seconded, questions been answered? Is there any further discussion?
Make sure Hal knows he has to unmute himself.
Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You is aye.
Bonin aye.
Cortez aye.
Morris aye. All right, so, we now have to approve various late license renewals and possible votes, and it looks like the only one that we have in front of us tonight is for Harry's Pizza. Application is complete, except for the fire inspection report, and Suzanne says she'll hold the license until she receives it.
I'll make the motion that we approve the license renewal for Harry's Pizza, holding the license until the fire inspection report is complete.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You is aye.
Bonin aye.
Cortez aye.
What does Hal's chair say?
I think it's aye. He had one job.
There he is. Waiting on your vote, Hal.
Yes.
Morris aye. Uh, brings us to approving the minutes and possible votes.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen Minute Meeting Minute, Meeting Minutes for Tuesday, December 15th.
We do have an executive session in the...
I was gonna do that second.
Oh, then I'll second you. Multi-part motion, for the first part of the multi-part motion.
All right, so the motion for the regular session minutes has been, to approve the regular session minutes has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
You is aye.
Bonin aye.
Cortez aye.
Morris aye.
So, now I'll make a motion that we approve the December 15th Executive Session Minutes and retain.
And I will second that part of the motion as well.
Okay, motion was made by Mike and seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
You is aye.
Bonin aye.
Cortez aye.
Morris aye. Brings us to your report, Mr. Administrator.
If you don't mind, it's, I'm getting all fogged up here, this mask. Uh, Mr. Chairman, as of late this afternoon, we have 19 active COVID-19 cases. Active means they're still within the isolation slash quarantine period. I know there's a technical difference between the two, I think it's isolation there. Up and down, as the weeks go by, we've been on several occasions in the last week as high as 32. Uh, this morning, we started off at 26, so during the day, seven people's period expired. Over the holidays, testing slowed down quite a bit, and the reporting of testing results also slowed down. The state as a whole has a rather high positivity rate right now for those tests that are being completed and reported. And the high end of 8% positivity rate. If national trends and that positivity rate are any indication, we are likely to see a solid two weeks to a month of significant caseloads in the area. I think it's indicative of just how difficult the pandemic can be if you watch events currently in Los Angeles County and California, different places in the south, uh, West Virginia and further south, where hospital systems have been overwhelmed by the number of cases, but they have. In Los Angeles County, they're taking the, what I consider to be almost draconian step of having emergency medical technicians make the decision whether or not they're gonna transport somebody based on whether or not they have any chance of survival. That's an extreme situation for any jurisdiction to be in. We hope, against all hope, that that kind of, uh, crisis doesn't reach us here in Massachusetts, but it's also naive to think that it won't, uh, based on where we are. So, it is a bit of a race against time for the vaccine to be distributed and applied, and for measures to be taken to prevent the spread to the extent that we can, with a new strain complicating that with greater contagious level. So, we're monitoring all of these things very carefully. We have begun a testing program for all first responders in the town of Douglas with CARESAC funds. Uh, it is an at-home... It is an at-home, self-administered test scheduled for when the employee finishes the last day of their last shift. They get the test, they should have the result back before they start their next shift on their schedule. So my purchase was timed to be 10 weeks' worth of testing for the employees that we want tested with the hope that they will be vaccinated before the end of that 10 weeks. If they choose not to be vaccinated, we'll continue the testing program for those people who are not taking the shot. But our primary concern is to maintain our operational capacity so we make sure that nobody comes to work sick and gets everybody else sick. That's the goal, is to protect our employees. And while we have the authority to ask people who are asymptomatic to work through their diagnosis, we are not gonna follow that guidance. Very clearly not following that guidance. Asymptomatic cases, we are responsible for about 50% of the spread. So if you test positive, we're giving them, we're telling them to stay home and use leave time. Either the federally provided leave or their town sick days, whatever they need to dip into. But we just don't want them coming to work if they have a positive test. We are not at that point of crisis where somebody needs to come in and work if they're sick, if they have the virus. As of today, the town is $235,000 richer because Flying Goose has closed with us on the real estate for Webster Street and submitted the purchase price with a bank check. So that will close the general fund in this current fiscal year. Getting back to one second for COVID, the Adult Social Center provided holiday meals to those who wished, so Thanksgiving, Christmas, and actively polled the senior population on how they feel about their food security. We are in a different spot now than we were in the spring. People have had all summer, and they have done exactly what you think they would do. They've stockpiled resources. They're not feeling the strain. They don't feel like they need to go out. And right now, there's been no supply chain, noticeable supply chain disturbances. So the goods that people want are available in the supermarkets that they trust. So currently, there isn't anybody who has signed up or asked for the service that we provided in the springtime. That could change, obviously, if we begin to see circumstances change. We've made provisions where we're ready to step up if we need to, but we're not gonna fire the program up again unless we have sufficient demand for it. The budget process is well underway. Internally, we've begun to work on the Personnel Supplement, which is that document that I like to produce, which accounts for the majority of our spending, which is our staff. We've had some turnover, especially in the Public Safety Department, so we're making sure we get their grade and step correct so that we project the budget out based on the staff that we have. I anticipate having a first mark of the budget fairly soon after that process is complete. There are going to be a couple of things that are changes. I'm looking to discuss with both this board and FinCom alternative methods providing certain services here at Town Hall, either to outsource them, because retirements have made it possible for me to consider that without changing anybody's employment status. So I want to pursue that, get a cost estimate, and see if we can save any money there. On the expense side, obviously, we've added an Assistant Chief Position, the Economic Development Coordinator, and we've brought the budget, the Building Inspector, up to a full-time position. Based upon the development that is in the pipeline, all of those moves are well justified by the amount of revenue that those positions support coming into the town. When you build a large warehouse and all the construction that goes with it, the building permit fee alone justifies the salary increase in the Budget Office many times over, not just once. So we want to make sure that we are providing those people who want to develop here the throughput, the service that they require to get their project done and not skimp on that salary for the sake of skimping on it. We want to make sure that we also attract a qualified individual to the position, which I think we have. So we're gonna make that announcement as soon as the employee is able to give notice to the current employer. On the capital side, the capital budget is also being worked on extensively. I don't know where the context is gonna be best for this conversation, but it is time to have a conversation about the overall financial direction of the town and the appetite and capacity for substantial investment in capital, including the possibility of, I think, what might be best as a capital exclusion for a building, for a highway. That's a, you know, five-to-10-year outlook. One of the things that's going on with the sale of property, decisions by the State Department of Revenue that they will not allow us to use cannabis, projected cannabis revenues in the recap, so we can't use it, we can't budget it as revenue that will be available for future spending. We're basically creating an engine for free cash. And the question there is, all right, so what pace do we want to do capital? And then where is the role of the roadways? I'm gonna come into this. I forwarded to the board today your dashboard that was promised as part of the pavement management process with StanTech. It's a nice little tool. It shows you exactly what stretches of road need to be addressed and the timeframe for doing that and what the budget implications are of waiting on some of them. So I know that we've never really been enthusiastic about earmarking revenues for specific projects because that gets complicated and becomes hard to manage the public's expectations if those revenues don't materialize. But we are in a good place where the reliable revenues of the town are sufficient to support the operations of the town without the use of free cash. And then there are things that we know are in the pipeline that are gonna materialize. So it's really time to have that conversation about what's the highest priority and how do you want to finance it with the various tools that Massachusetts makes available to its municipalities. So I anticipate having a fairly robust capital budget for this year in anticipation of the needs of the town without having to borrow anything this fiscal year. And last but not least, because it's already been brought up in a sideways kind of fashion, I will point out that one of the Senate runoff races tonight pits a successful graduate of the Georgetown University School of Foreign Service versus an Air Force Academy dropout. Now, I don't want to handicap that race, but actually, for me, it's a win-win. But I know, we're all very proud of your son, Selectman, and Chief Vincent's son, who have both been going through basic training and their initiation into the armed services of the country. And we owe them a debt of gratitude for the service that they're providing us. We're always grateful for that. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Open session for topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Anybody have anything that falls under that category that they'd like to discuss?
No.
All right. Seeing as none, I will look for one of Tim's famous motions.
All right. I would make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining and contract negotiations, and then to leave that executive session for the sole purpose of adjourning for the evening.
I would second that well-crafted motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
You, aye.
Bone, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Dave, aye.
Morris, aye.